Okay, hello and good evening. This is the September 3rd, 2020, 6:00 PM regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I will call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. The entire committee is in attendance today and this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Okay, we will move right along in our agenda. We have no minutes for approval. And what I would like to do is give an opportunity for visitors to speak at the meeting. We'll do that at the beginning of the meeting only. And once that's complete, then we will move on to our first order of business. So Jamie, are we all set to invite guests in?
Yes, the minute they raise their hand, I can send them in.
Okay, so if anybody in the audience would like to speak tonight, now would be your opportunity to do so. And if that is the case, just please raise your hand and we will bring you in. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we have plenty of participants in attendance, but no one is currently raising their hand. So we will move on to our first order of business, which is...
You have a hand?
Oh, now I have a can. Good catch. And now she's gone. Oh, here she comes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Carrie, how are you?
Good, how are you guys doing?
Good, thanks.
Good. I know this is a really tough decision for you guys and there's a lot of weight on your shoulders. I can relate in my own job. I just felt the need to just join and, you know, I appreciate all that you're doing and I appreciate you, all your hard work. I am an advocate for sports. I have three children in the system. I have two that are in the high school. One is a senior, one is a captain of the soccer team. You know, and I just really hope that in addition to being able to let them play, that they're able to play amongst other towns. I think mentally and physically, it's very important for them, given the fact that they're going to be in homes remotely learning. I think it's a big outlet for them and I just hope you take that into consideration when you're making your decision.
Okay, thank you Carrie for speaking up.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Certainly worth mentioning at this point, we have received a lot of communication via emails, phone calls and such. I know I haven't gotten back to all those that have emailed me yet. I will certainly do my best to do so, but certainly want to acknowledge all the input that we've received on this issue from the community. Certainly important to receive that. Okay, I do not see any more hands raised, so we will now move on and we will go to 4.1.1, which is an update on staff PD and opening of schools.
Okay, so we wanted to provide you an update on some of the professional development that not only occurred during the summer, but then has been this week as all staff are back and we're preparing for the opening of school with students on September 16th. And Mrs. Brown's joining us tonight and she'll be able to add some of the insights into, because she really has been doing a phenomenal job coordinating all of this professional development. And this week, there's been a lot of coordination of things with different workshops going on, you know, at the same time where Mrs. Brown and our resources get stretched a little bit. So, but she's been doing a phenomenal job. But just to take you through the summer months, when we were in a planning mode as administrators, we did offer 28 workshops to start to prepare our staff. Obviously, those were voluntary workshops in July and August, but in those 28 workshops, we had 311 enrollments. That doesn't mean 311 people. Some people took more than one workshop, but we thought that was pretty impressive, that 311 enrollments in July through August 28th. Not counting that we also then ran a universal design for learning now course and we had 42 staff members sign up for that. And if I'm correct, Mrs. Brown, that actually, that's kind of a rolling course where we can take that into October, so staff can still take that.
Correct.
And if you take a look then in the memo that was in your packets, you have two charts, one that details the four offerings we gave staff on August 21st. And this was nice to see because as we started to get into August, as generally happens, we have staff coming back into the buildings, starting to get into their classrooms. We had 58 staff members that attended, both some in person and some virtually, on August 21st. And there's a live, not a live document, but a PDF in the shared folder. If you wanted to take a look at some of those live links in that PDF, it'll take you to the recordings of those professional development opportunities. And then on the 26th, we offered five more professional development offerings and we had 39 staff members come into that. So we were pretty happy with the amount of staff that took time this summer to take part in our workshops and that kind of set a tone for this week where after we hosted our very first virtual convocation, which was open to all staff members and utilized live stream in Google Meets for the first time. And that's a new feature that Google's, Google's putting out a lot of new features for their Google Meet product. And so this week, we've been learning all about not only different facets of Google Meet, but also Google Classroom and how we can utilize all these different tools to our advantage as we start our instruction with students. I don't know, Ms. Brown, if you want to offer some of the highlights, we've seen pretty incredible attendance in all of those.
Yeah, so on the first, we had two sessions of remote learning tools where we focused on four main tools that everyone in the district's going to be using. And we had 476 people attend between the two of them because they could come back if they wanted to. So apparently, a lot of people came back just to make sure they had that information. We also offered a workshop in the morning of the first for paraprofessionals and anyone else was open to kind of computer basics and MacBooks so that they could get some familiarity with that. And since then, we've been offering workshops through vendors like iReady, Albert I/O, but we've also been offering a lot of optional PD around a lot of the tools that we've purchased for folks like Kami and TurnItIn. And I have to say, it's all been run by staff and the facilitators of those PDs have been phenomenal and we couldn't do this without them. But just for an example, at the Kami PD, which was optional, we had 102 people attend. So, and the flip...
Kami's, I was just going to alert people what Kami was. So that's a product that allows you to edit and combine or collaborate on a PDF so that you can offer comments, notes and so forth and share that with other group, people in your group.
Yep. So just, you know, again, fabulous facilitators and lots of workshop options in addition to the ones that are mandatory and attendance has been great and the feedback's been great as well.
And as we move into next week, we will start to move from looking at some of these software products and different tools and we'll be moving into, for the entire district, administrators, paras, teachers and so forth, will all be working on social emotional education and support and how we integrate that into what we do in our given grade levels or content areas. We know that that's going to be a piece that we're going to have to have in place and be well established so that we can support our students right from the start until the 16th.
Yep, we want our students obviously to thrive and they need to be in the right space to be able to thrive and learn. So the techniques that we'll be learning about will be really useful in terms of making sure every child feels engaged and safe and part of the community, the classroom community.
Do you know if you have questions on any of the professional development or the prep that we're doing as we move through this week and into next week?
There's a few more professional development opportunities in the next week or so before we start, correct?
Quite a lot, actually.
A few is a relative term.
Are there any professional developments that all staff are required to participate in, or is this a menu by which educators are kind of picking from at their discretion?
So we have three different categories for the PD. We have building meetings, we have district PD, which is mandatory, and then we have optional PDs. And so the district PD that's mandatory has mostly been differentiated by grade levels. So for example, our iReady, we had a K, sorry, first grade, second grade, three to five, six to eight, just obviously it makes sense. And then the optional, sometimes we differentiate those by grade level, sometimes not. So our attendance, obviously at the district ones that are required has been great, but what's been really neat is how many folks have taken advantage of the optional PDs.
Heather, on your assessment, is staff starting to feel ready to take on this virtual learning?
It's, you know, it's a tall order, but one of the messages that they keep hearing and we keep telling each other is that we got this and between all of our expertise, you know, we're there to support each other. So yes, I mean, I know we can do it. I know we're going to do a great job, but a lot of it's just feeling that confidence and yes, folks are feeling better and more confident.
And the recordings will be up throughout the year in case they come across, oh gee, I want to try this and they can get access it.
That, and then what we're being calling ELPS University, which is those workshops that Mr. Smith was talking about, there are actually a lot of online self-paced courses. We have a self-paced course on every tool that is out there. So folks can either watch videos or they can do the self-paced course, whichever works for their learning style.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on the opening update?
Sounds like we're in a good spot so far and just continued good work and I'm encouraged by the numbers that, of staff that are participating. I think that's a good sign.
Yes, agreed. Okay, thank you for the update. We will move on now for a discussion of fall sports. Jamie, if you can bring in Mr. McGee and Mr. Page, please.
And I think we have our health director, Amy Petrowski, also available.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello Frank.
Good, how we doing?
Hanging in there.
So, and I will say, and Greg referenced this earlier, you know, we appreciate all the families reaching out over the last couple of weeks, expressing their, you know, support and interest in this topic. And I will just say on personal note, I think our school committee has been awesome in terms of conversations we've had. So as Ms. Petrowski as well, just to make sure that, you know, whatever proposals we're making tonight, we're doing so in a safe way. And, you know, we do have that as our primary focus as we, you know, try to come up with these ways of giving kids an opportunity to get out and, you know, exercise, socialize and potentially compete. So I just want to thank you guys for all of your efforts as well. So with that, do you want me to get right into it Greg?
Yeah, please, if you could Frank, yeah.
Do you need the screen sharing properties?
Yes, yeah, if you don't mind.
Jamie, would you be able to provide Frank the opportunity to share his screen?
You're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
We also have Kevin McGee, our athletic director, and Amy Petrowski, our town health director.
Okay, and let me see here, just give me one second. So, you know, this is a follow-up presentation from the conversation that we had on August 24th. And since that time has passed, we've had some conversations both at the state level, conversations with the PBIC athletic directors. And we found out what the modifications were going to be and the recommendations for those modifications for the fall sports that we're hoping to run here at the high school. So tonight, we're hoping to share those with you. We'll answer any questions that you have in terms of the structure. What we're going to do is first, Mr. McGee is going to walk you through a lot of those modifications. He's really dug into them and I think he's the best one to explain to the committee what those modifications for each individual sport are going to be. And then we'll push forth a proposal for the different sports that we're hoping to run and what those levels of those sports are that we're hoping to run. And, you know, making sure that we are adhering to those state guidelines for each of those sports. So at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. McGee and he's going to talk to you a little bit about the first group of sports that we're going to be talking about in terms of outdoor fall sports.
So as you know, the MIA modifications came out last week. I reviewed them all. I went over it with all the different fall coaches. I want to preface everything with myself, the athletic trainer. All the fall coaches are definitely committed to implementing these modifications. We definitely think it's doable. I'm going to talk to you first about the outdoor fall sports. So as a reminder, those are golf, cross-country, field hockey and soccer. For all of those sports consistently, facial coverings will be worn during all athletic activity. Breaks will be planned by coaches during social distancing activities. All personal items will remain in the athlete's bag and athletes will bring their own water and hand sanitizer. There will be limited shared equipment and sanitizing breaks will occur based on each sports guidelines. Practice pods will be created with the same five to 10 students consistently working out together. Handshakes and huddles within six feet will not occur and athletes on the bench will remain six feet apart. So that's all of those outdoor sports consistently across the board. And we're going to talk about each individual sport, some of the major changes in each individual one. Frank, if you, Mr. Page, if you can switch that. So the major modifications in these sports, golf, there's not too many major modifications. It's going to look pretty similar, but some of those modifications are golfers will not enter clubhouses unless they had to use the bathroom. Golfers will not exchange scorecards. Tea times will be staggered at least 10 minutes per group. So not too many major modifications with golf. Cross-country would be restricted to competitions with only being dual meets. Course previews would be provided virtually to opposing schools. Staggered starts in waves of eight to 10 athletes would occur. And starting and finishing areas would be widened to allow for social distancing. For both of those sports, there are many more modifications that the MIA put in, but after reviewing them, those are the major ones that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention and also so that the public can see, start to see what some of these sports would look like. So field hockey and soccer, those two sports would look much different. Field hockey would now be played seven V seven. There would be no penalty corners. Any fouls inside the circle would be 25-yard hits. Officials would use electronic whistles or air horns. And I would say the fall sport that has the most major changes would be soccer. Head balls would not be allowed. It is a violation to intentionally make body contact with an opposing team member's body. Throw-ins would be replaced with kick-ins. The use of traditional defensive walls would be eliminated and all indirect kicks must be played on the ground, not including goal kicks.
So that gives you an overview in terms of what the outdoor fall sports that we're being allowed to potentially offer at the tiers one, two and three level. And our hope is, our proposal tonight is at an inter-scholastic level, so we're talking about competing with other communities, that we allow cross-country, golf, field hockey and soccer to participate in inter-scholastic competition. This model this fall will follow all Massachusetts EEA, DESE, DPH and MIAA approved guidelines. So with all of these sports, there's approved guidelines at the state level by all of these different groups and we will make sure that we safely adhere to all of these guidelines that are outlined for us so that we can compete against other communities with all four of these sports.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
When we're talking about golf and cross-country, there's obviously, based on the nature of the sport, periods of time when athletes would not necessarily be visible to coaches. Were there any provisions made by the MIAA to allocate how adults should be provisioned to ensure that during those times when athletes aren't visible to the coach, that there's additional monitors present to kind of ensure that these guidelines are being followed? It's different than soccer and field hockey when everyone's in a controlled space. I just wasn't sure. I didn't notice it and I didn't know if that was a discussion that maybe had happened.
Sure, so in the golf guidelines, they do suggest that coaches should actively be following groups on the course. I do suspect in golf, it would be a limited number of participants that are actually competing. So I would anticipate at the most four, foursomes, and I believe with at least two golf coaches there, they would be able to monitor, they'd be able to communicate ahead of time for each coach to monitor two different holes. So it was put in the golf modifications for the coaches to be active. With cross-country, with our home course, we could definitely set it up so that we had visual monitoring of all the athletes. For both sports, they are allowed to, for both cross-country and golf, they are allowed to remove their facial coverings when they are socially distanced. So at the start of the cross-country race, they would have the masks on. At the start of the golf, anytime that they were not able to social distance, they would put their mask up.
Thank you for clarifying.
I have a couple of questions too. Is there a limit of participants for each of the teams and is there varsity JV freshman?
So the, we've had some conversations about that. As far as having our East Long Meadows students participate, we want every East Long Meadows student that wants to participate to have an opportunity to participate. So we are going to have conversations with coaches that this is a different year than any other year. Our focus is not about winning a championship, it's about giving our students an opportunity to participate. Varsity level would look a little bit different than the JV and freshman level. There are some very strict DPH guidelines with the number of participants we can have on a practice field. So that number is 25 in a designated practice field. So different sports would have to definitely split up into groups and then on that practice field of 25, our coaches would be continuing to separate cohorts of five to 10 athletes. So naturally, there would be a varsity team if there's enough participation for a JV team, enough participation for a freshman team. There would be the potential of having upperclassmen play JV. We would definitely look into hiring more coaches if the participation numbers were way up, but we, we really do not want to cut athletes this season. We want everybody to have an opportunity to participate. Whether or not they're able to compete in games, that's another, that would be a varsity coach's decision as far as playing time, but we do want them to have somewhere to participate.
Yeah, and just to reemphasize that point, the participants that you might have in a practice setting might be more than what you would see in a game setting. We're obviously going to be limiting the game opportunities more just because there's obviously, you know, participants from other schools there and we have to make sure that we adhere to the MIA state guidelines for game events as well.
So is varsity the only level that would be competing or is JV competing as well?
So we would, we would still want JV and freshmen to compete if you approve that and if we had competition to play against. So brief conversations with other athletic directors that are similar to us, they would want their JV team and their freshman team to also have the opportunity to compete against other schools.
I think it's great that you guys are offering it to all the students. I really do. It might be a chance for somebody who wouldn't have had the opportunity to play a sport in high school. So if there's a silver lining, it's a little tiny one, but it's nice to hear.
Yeah, I agree with all of that. You know, it's, this is going to be a unique year and the fact that you're mentioning participation levels and you want every, you don't want to have any cuts or anything, I think is really encouraging to seeing this program move forward.
Thank you. I think the other piece to this is the, the training that we're going to have to give our coaches and make sure that they're aware and how we're ensuring that we put all these safeguards in place because without the safeguards, this wouldn't be possible. But I know that Mr. Page and Mr. McGee have thought through all of this and are working really closely with our town health director, Ms. Petrowski, so that we can provide this opportunity.
And we'll just emphasize, we're aware that, you know, these are some complex guidelines and there's a lot of things we're going to have to do to ensure that these things are followed safely, but we feel it's that important for our students to be able to participate that we are having this conversation with you tonight.
And can I ask, typically, there's GPA requirements in terms of participation. Are those still all in effect based on, I know some of the changes to the end of last academic year, that would be the student's final GPA carrying forward into the launch of this academic year? Those all still, or have there been modifications been made by the MIAA?
So those GPA requirements are still in place minus the freshman. Obviously, the freshman GPA doesn't exist yet at the high school, so the freshmen get a free pass, but they still are going to have to meet GPA requirements. And at the school level, during, during any given day that they're looking to participate in athletics, they're going to have to attend classes as well. So it's going to be the attendance requirement too.
Okay.
And actually, East Long Meadows eligibility process is stricter than MIAA.
Thank you.
So Kevin, you have more to the presentation, right? If we just want to get through the presentation?
Sure, do you want to, Mr. Page, do you want to, or Ms. Thompson, do you want to look at this proposal or do you want us to go through the entire presentation first?
If we go through the presentation and then we'll come back to it at the end.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, so this, the second proposal here, give me one sec, is in relation to football and cheerleading. Now, in regards to both of these sports, they're in a little bit of a different situation than the other sports that we outlined earlier. So I'm going to have Mr. McGee just talk a little bit about the guidelines around football and cheerleading.
Sure, so the MIA has moved both football and cheerleading competitions to begin on February 22nd. ELHS would still like to give football players and cheerleaders the opportunity to participate in Level 1 outdoor practices this fall. These activities would be socially distanced, individual and group activities. They would be non-contact workouts, aerobic conditioning, skill work and drills. I have talked to the football coach and the cheerleading coach. Both of them believe that Level 1 outdoor practices would benefit their program.
So just to be clear on that Kevin, I know I said we wouldn't ask questions, but the Level 1 is different than the Level 3 that we're talking about, specifically the social distancing part?
Correct. The Level 1 would be non-contact workouts, aerobic conditioning, skill work and drills. They could work on some of their plays, their offensive plays or defensive plays, but there wouldn't be contact. It'll be all following the Level 1 guidelines.
And that's the most we can offer based on MIA regulations for football and cheer?
Yes.
And this would include all players wearing masks at all times, correct?
Unless they were socially distanced and, so if they're doing something six to 10 feet apart and the coach plans that in their practice plans to have them take off their masks, they could take off their masks during that time.
Yes. Okay, so, so obviously, this proposal's a little bit different. We're not talking about inter-scholastic play with cheer and football. This is something that would get moved to that floating season that would begin in February with the potential of, you know, the scenario allowing us to do that in that time of year. So with all that, what we're making for our second proposal, all football and cheerleading to participate in Level 1 practices this fall, following all Massachusetts EEA, DESE, DPH and MIAA approved guidelines.
The last one we're going to talk about...
A lot of agencies. Yes, yes. A lot of people have their hands in this stuff.
Yep. The last one we're going to talk about is volleyball and that's our only indoor fall sport. Currently, the mass DPH will only allow 25 participants inside the gymnasium. Teams will remain... gymnasium. Teams will remain on the same side during the entire match. So if we were to play, that's one of the modifications that the MIAA put in, that there would be no changing of sides by the volleyball teams. Volleyballs will be replaced with a clean ball after every rally during interscholastic competitions. So that, those were some of the major changes that the MIAA put out for indoor volleyball competitions.
So this one, it's obviously a little bit different because we're talking about indoor sports versus outdoor sports. So, you know, there are more things that we'd have to adhere to, but we do feel confident by, you know, staggering practices, limiting gym access, limiting access to things like locker rooms. We should be able to adhere to these guidelines. So with that, the third proposal here is to allow volleyball to practice indoors this fall, following all Massachusetts EA, DESE, DPH and MIAA guidelines. If full indoor volleyball is not approved, the alternative might be to allow outdoor practices and only five to six home away indoor competitions following all guidelines. So we did want to also just touch basically quickly on some things that we do have to consider, but they're not necessarily fully linked to those earlier proposals in terms of being the deciding factor. But one thing we want you to think about and talk about is building access. So in order to keep the athletes as safe as possible, recommend that fall athletes do not have access to the indoor facility. Other athletes would be able to utilize the restrooms near the weight room and the athletic trainers room behind the school. All other areas of the school would be closed to the athletes. So the idea here would be, again, to keep the kids, you know, engaging in those sports outdoors. But obviously, common sense, you know, they still might need access to facilities for, for the time that they're at the school.
Would there be an adult that was like in the building for students, like if they were going to be coming in and using the bathrooms, just to make sure they're not loitering too much?
Yeah. So it's, it's going to be really strict in terms of the access during that time. You know, there is a way for us to isolate that space at the back where it would only be access to those two bathrooms, a male and female bathroom back there. And with that, we'd only be allowing one student in the building at a time.
Okay.
So, Mr. McGee, you want to hit on transportation for us?
Of course. So with transportation, there is a transportation shortage, and there are restrictions on the number of athletes that would be able to ride on a bus. The Athletic Department will continue to monitor transportation availability. However, we wanted families to know that they should be prepared to provide their own transportation to athletic events if the school was not able to get that transportation.
Would students be able to, if you were able to get busing, but the parents wanted to drive their kids, would that be an option?
Yes, definitely. So parents, even when we do have buses, we always are supportive of parents taking their own kids to athletic events. And that would definitely be the case this year.
And preliminarily, Beth, the discussion has been not to provide busing. If we can do without the busing, mostly because of the logistical issue of the whole thing. But that would also have potentially an impact on the scheduling. There's some discussion about weekend games versus weekday games, or later in the evening games versus right after school.
Yeah. Okay. I'm not a fan of the buses. I mean, not that I'm not, but I think if families can get them there, that's great.
Yeah. And we just wanted to highlight these, these different topics. One for, obviously, something for school committee to consist, consider and, and get thought to, but also just to make families aware as we present tonight that, you know, these might be some of the things that even though we, we offer a fall sports program, we may not be able to offer all of the components that we typically do in a traditional athletic season.
Has there been, has there been any feedback from the parents yet on transportation? Or is this all kind of new for them?
Right now, we haven't had those conversations. I think the conversations that I've had with different families, different athletes, is just the desire to participate, period. So I don't think they're necessarily, the conversations I've had haven't been really focused around that topic.
Okay. I'm, with the time that the kids start, would they be starting like after five o'clock? Would it be at two o'clock? I mean, thinking about, you've got parents there, your kids are learning, all the different, like what is the timeframe you're thinking to start practice, like the traditional after-school time around two-ish?
So in the past, we've never, we've, we've always had practices starting, encourage coaches to start 2:45 or later. We can definitely adjust those times. We have the entire athletic facility for the entire time. I would need to talk with some of the coaches. I think the coaches right now, we're planning on primarily around a 3:00 PM start time.
Okay.
Yeah. We've always encouraged the coaches to try to hold off until that time anyway, to allow students to seek extra help and make up test exams, things like that for classes. So we pushed our coaching staff to try to adhere to a later start time anyway. So in this situation, if a kid is finishing class at, right now scheduled to be 1:45, we should be able to build in some leeway to get them to have some time to get to the school and prepare to practice.
All right. Thank you.
And Frank, just to go one step further on your discussion of some of the hurdles, the other hurdle that we, we have discussed is the ability for spectators to potentially be at competitions. We're still waiting for some clarification on that. There's some guidance from the MIAA, about 50 people on a field, which would really just be the players and coaches and referees. But, but there may be some opportunity for spectators. We're still going to need clarification on that, but we just want to put that out there for families so they can start to at least prepare for that. We are coordinating with Mr. Mackey from LCAT to hopefully potentially be able to livestream games for families to be able to watch, if we can provide an opportunity for spectators live. That's still to be worked out, but those are some of the hurdles.
And to Mr. Thompson's point, you know, the decision connected up to, to sports this evening allows us to start scheduling and preparing for both practices and games. But there's other components that we, I think we have a little bit of time here to make decisions on, things like potential transportation, things like spectators. The first game we're talking about is going to be that first week of October. So there is a little bit of time to make some decisions and figure out how we can make some of these other components at the end here work when we're talking about some of these considerations.
Right. And we talked about not going for the championship. There won't be any playoffs. Really, the schedule will be, will be made by the athletic directors, basically coordinating with each other. And, and Kevin, we're going to be in somewhat of a cohort of other schools, right? Directly the ones we can play.
So based on the athletic director meetings, we're still working on what schools would be together. But it's pretty safe to say that we would definitely be remaining in Hampden County for all our competitions. Similar-sized schools such as Long Meadow, Minnetoga, Wobbo, potentially Agawam and West Springfield, those are the types of schools as far as distance goes and size schools that we would be competing against. Those teams still need to be finalized by the PVIAC, but it would definitely be a very local schedule in Hampden County, much closer than other competitions that we've done in the past.
Right. And again, though, there would be no playoff schedule. It just really are competitive games, and that would be the extent of the competition.
So the MIAA has said that there's no MIAA tournament this fall.
Yeah.
The PVIAC is still looking at potentially having some type of varsity competition at the end of the season. But all of the athletic directors have tabled that discussion because our priority right now is getting athletes to participate. And those, those conversations about potentially having a PVIAC league championship game are still on the table. There's still potential for that, but it's not, nothing's been decided as far as a PVIAC league championship. But the MIAA traditional tournament is definitely not happening.
Okay. Is that the last slide in the presentation, Frank?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Amy, if you could chime in, based on the presentation, some of the things we've discussed, how the health department, local health department is feeling about if we were to continue with the proposal?
Yeah. So I've been working with Mr. Smith and Kevin on the plans. And really, the MIAA has put out plans that take into account the DPH regulations and the governor's orders. So it's going to be a whole mix of people who are working together to ensure that the kids are able to participate in sports and do that safely. It is a little early for me to have much input because a lot of the DPH guidelines for sports aren't, aren't out yet. But I would say what is on the table right now seems to be sufficient and protective.
Amy, just a quick question. There's a difference, obviously, when we're moving, we've emphasized throughout the slides that this is outdoors. And that's, that's a big piece to all of this because the, the risk reduces somewhat if we can get outdoors and separate as opposed to having 15 or 20 students in a classroom for, you know, four to five hours a day.
Right. Yeah. Being outdoors is definitely a mitigating factor. We're also going to have masks. It's going to be a much smaller group than we are when I'm talking about kids moving through the high school or sitting in a classroom all day. I mean, I think this is a very different thing that we're, we're discussing than when we were talking about having kids in class.
But still, would be a, a family decision because no matter what we do or put in place, there's always an element of risk.
Right.
For the volleyball, for the girls volleyball, would they be wearing masks the entire time?
So, yep. Girls volleyball, unless they're doing drills where they're able to socially distance, they'll be wearing their masks during the entire competition. The volleyball during competitions gets sanitized after every single rally. But to answer your question, yes, during competitions, they would have their masks on the entire time. The coaches would have their masks on, the officials, the players on the bench. So everybody would have masks on during that interscholastic competition.
Can we set up nets outside for the girls for volleyball for practicing come the fall? I mean, I know it's an added expense, but if the weather's good, it's nice, we're going into the fall, as opposed to them having to be indoors with their practice. It, you know, it might even be better just as far as breathing and that kind of thing is concerned. Have we thought about that?
Yes. So I've been in contact with the volleyball coach. He competed in an outdoor volleyball league all summer. He's 100% supportive of that. We've gotten a quote from a company. So we have the quote ready to go to order outdoor volleyball nets so that we can set that up for them outdoors.
Okay. Great.
And Beth, just to bring one step further, Kevin did actually have discussion with the other athletic directors about potentially having competitions outside.
Yeah.
But, but they balked at that for consistency reasons. But certainly, you know, we've tried everything, and, and that is one of the ideas that we certainly have floated so far. So.
Okay. All right. I think it would be fun to do it outside. It'd be unique if nothing else.
To put, to make practice outside, I agree with what's being said. It would probably be a little bit easier and a little bit easier to breathe. Plus, let's take advantage of the nice weather while it's still here.
So then would competitions be inside?
For volleyball, yes.
And still no, there's no spectators? It would just be?
For volleyball, there would be no spectators because we, based on the numbers that would be allowed in the gymnasium one time. But again, that would be one of the sports, specifically we'd like to livestream at least.
Would we be requiring any kind of orientation for families who opt their child in so they're clear about what all of these changes are and how it potentially impacts them and their student athlete?
Sure. So I have talked to Mr. Mackey. He's agreed to videotape myself and the athletic trainer, Diane Savakul. We would review all of the athletic protocols in that video. We're developing all the information for the athletes, and we would do that video on LCAT, send it out to the families from there. That, that would be our plan to start the communication going. And I'm also always available with emails for any families that have specific questions. The coaches will also be setting up some type of system where they're going to communicate out to athletes before the first day. There's going to be a lot of communication with the athletic department and families in the next few weeks.
Is there any sort of a sign-off to make sure that everybody understands what's being told and how, you know, how stringent and tight it is?
Yeah. So Bill, as you know, there's a waiver that all the athletes will sign, the families will sign before this, they begin the sports season. And we've consulted with our council to potentially add wording specifically to COVID and the risks, the inherent risks that just being in groups provide. So yes.
Okay. And, and just to follow up on that, I have been in contact with Family ID. So I will be able to input all of those sign-offs that are related to COVID-19 to families. So families will be getting a notification that all of the, that information is going to be on Family ID. And they'll be able to go in, review it. They'll be able to digitally sign that they have reviewed it. That will be one of the requirements that'll be added in the next couple of weeks for families.
Okay. That sounds good.
What's the fee going to be this year? Is it the same? Is it reduced?
We haven't talked about that yet, Beth. I, there's potential for that, that to change, but we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
But worthy of discussion because we won't have busing costs. There's still costs for referees, uniforms, all those things. We're, we're having some discussion about potentially ordering some gators for folks. So there's some other costs. We have to go through all that, but it's on the table to discuss still if we do approve this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any additional trainings if we were to move forward with athletics that our athletic trainers or our coaches would be required to participate in so that they're fully aware of the requirements that are being put forth?
So the NFHS has an online class that relates directly to this. So that would be a requirement that we would have coaches do. They would take that required NFHS class. So that would be one of the things. And then also, we will have a coaches meeting where we review all of these additional guidelines that are unique to this year.
NFHS is National Federation of High School Sports.
And certainly important to reiterate that we're going to follow the rules to the T. And unfortunately, sports are going to look very different, specifically soccer. Being a coach for over 10 years, I'm a little disheartened at what the game of soccer will look like this year. So, but, but we will follow the rules by the book. And I want to make that clear that that's priority number one.
And I, I'm assuming on a typical day when athletics are happening across the field at the high school practices and such that, that that's relatively easy to monitor in some ways because it's typical rules. Are we feeling comfortable right now with the amount of staff we have beyond coaches that we can effectively monitor? To Greg's point, that all of these regulations are being met in terms of access to the building, properly groups, groups of students that are remaining intact in those pods, facial coverings. There's just a lot more to monitor. So I'm just wondering, who's going to offer support beyond coaches to actively monitor that?
So we've had discussions around reaching out to other staff members who might be interested in helping us with that. And so, you know, they may be more in a supervisory role, monitoring that type of thing than coaching the actual sport. And we think Mr. McGee and Mr. Page feel that we will have staff that might be interested in doing that.
If I can chime in there as well, we've had a lot of staff who have informally volunteered. Obviously, we have not formally, you know, posted anything, asked them to, to, you know, get involved just yet because we, we haven't gotten that formal approval. But we do have a lot of staff who express that interest. One thing I would also like to talk about and consider as a school committee is, I know other communities are doing this, we're putting their athletic programs into place, is, is really creating a closed campus for the afternoon. So it's, it is only limited to the students during that time. We shouldn't have, you know, people in the community walking the facilities, you know, walking their dogs, you know, stopping by the school for various things. In order to make this work safely, you know, it should be a closed campus during that time.
And would that be something that members of, of the Department of Health would be coming out to monitor, too, and to kind of check in on how we are implementing the protocols as they've been written, like in terms of an outside perspective as to how we're handling that?
The health department staff would show up if we received a complaint. But really, it would be up to the school to monitor, to make sure that the programs that they have are meeting the criteria that's set forth. The other thing I did want to mention is the MIAA guidance does suggest or recommend hiring a COVID coach, so someone who is specifically responsible for enforcing these guidelines for each specific sport, making sure that parents have someone to go to who's really trained in these. And I'm, I don't know, if Mr. McGee was planning on something like that.
Yep. So as far as a COVID coach, I think that's definitely something that we would look at. Our athletic trainer and I are working really closely with that. And I think I would talk to Mr. Page to see if we would hire somebody in addition to the athletic trainer, especially in the beginning. The athletic, athletics are going to look different when athletes are coming to the facility. So in our orientation, we're going to be reminding them that they should be So in our orientation, we're going to be reminding them that they should be going directly from their car to their practice site. They shouldn't be cutting across other fields where there's other groups going on. We do have to follow the, the guidelines of only 25 athletes per set practice field. So the turf field could be split up into two different practice sites. It's going to be important for the athletes to know what field they're going to, um, so they're not cutting across other areas, but, um, those are, those are some things we're going to work on in the next few days.
I think that's something I'd, I'd want to hear more about, just when I think about, um, well, that's amazing that we have individuals willing to support and volunteer their time. I think when you're talking about enforcement of regulations from the state, that we need to have, have something in place so that as a, as a peer, in some cases, a coach and a, and a potential colleague, I don't necessarily know that that's the role we want to put those individuals in to be monitoring one another. Um, as opposed to having administrators or individuals whose sole responsibility is to effectively monitor the implementation of these regulations. Um, I just think that that's something that we could be entering into a slippery slope if we don't have, have those, those individuals clearly delineated and their responsibilities clearly delineated, delineated as opposed to, which is wonderful, volunteers, um, from the high school staff.
Yeah, and I reference volunteers in terms of willing to be, uh, to help out and, you know, be part of, um, the programs to make those things run. Obviously, some of the things I think you're referencing to are, are responsibilities that are going to also follow myself, Mr. McGee, Mr. Wright, uh, the school administrators as well, and, and I'm expecting to be, um, in, at the school in the afternoons. Uh, Mr. McGee's planning on being there. Um, Mr. Wright and I have already talked about, you know, flexing our hours so we can cover some of these things as well because, you know, it, it makes no sense for us to be in the school all day when there's no kids, and then when kids finally show up, go home, you know?
So Frank, to that point, is it fair to say that at least one of the three of you will, will probably be at any athletic event that we have on the campus?
Yes.
Okay. But Sarah, certainly worth further discussion. I think there's a lot of logistics that we still have to work out on this, um, if we go forward with it, but, uh, I think we certainly have to keep an eye on that for sure. Any other questions, concerns?
Has the MIAA put out any guidelines if, if an athlete is showing any COVID symptoms?
Yes, they have. Um, so, uh, and we've worked with Ms. Petrowski on looking at how we manage that. So if there is information on, um, say, an individual's household, so an athlete's household where there might be a positive test, similar to what we were talking about, what, which might happen in the classroom, um, if we get that information, we would need to sit that individual down and possibly, um, that team, am I correct, Ms. Petrowski?
Uh, DPH, so that's one of the things that we just don't have the answers to yet. DPH hasn't provided us any guidelines about the contact tracing that will happen around sporting, um, high school sporting events. So I don't know if that will be the whole.
We lost you there.
Right, if we're, if we're, oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry, I, I am at my son's soccer practice. Um, uh, I think that it will also depend on the sport, right? So we just don't have a clear answer on that. If we're looking at cheer or football where those people are practicing just individual drills, they're not having any contact with each other, then there, there might not be any need to then further that quarantine. If we're looking at a more contact-related sport like soccer, then they might suggest a, a wider, uh, trace back in close contact analysis. I, I really just don't have those answers yet.
We will need to help us with that as we go forward, though, and, because you'll be the expert as we move forward on it, okay?
And, and the challenge is, um, and you've heard, uh, Mr. McGee and Mr. Page reference this a number of times, is you have multiple agencies working and putting together guidelines for this. Um, and so the MIAA has talked about creating pods or cohorts in, in, um, the individual teams. And the, the reason behind that is that you have fewer contacts than should you get some indication that either an athlete or someone in the athlete's home has, um, tested positive, so that you're not going to the level of, that we were talking about when we talked about, say, an elementary classroom.
Am I correct to assume that we wouldn't be looking to entertain any eighth grade waivers during this period of time as well? If we are not able to field teams based on high school enrollment, then that we wouldn't be considering what we've done in the past and considering eighth graders as part of this?
Yeah.
Looking at the fall numbers, um, the students that are registered, we wouldn't, uh, need an eighth grade waiver for this fall, uh, based on the registered number of athletes.
Has the waiver process been discussed if, you know, by MIAA or any of the other organizations yet?
Um, so the waiver process is still intact and that waiver process is only meant to prevent a program from folding. So the only time that schools should be requesting waivers is if they're in jeopardy of not having that program. Um, so that same system is still in place.
And I don't think any, that's ever been the case in the fall, right? Kevin, we've never had any fall sports.
Correct, we have not had any fall sport waivers. We have considered, uh, girls cross country in the past, and those numbers are a little bit low. Um, but we will still be able to have a girls cross country team regardless.
One of the, um, pieces that, um, we've mentioned a little bit about, but, and we talked about, um, our trainer. So our trainer is obviously going to be pivotal in, um, helping our coaches monitor and make sure that, um, our athletes are in the safest possible situation. So we're going to be supplying the trainer with, um, basically the same type of equipment that we're going to be supplying our nurses with, um, in our health rooms. And, um, I don't know, Mr. McGee, if we're going to be doing temperature checks of every athlete, but I know that, um, we'll be prepared and certainly asking not all of our families and our staff to monitor for the different, um, ailments, excuse me, that's not the right
Symptoms.
Symptoms, thank you, um, of COVID, and, and that's something that we have to make sure that everyone's very aware of what they're monitoring for, and that that's done on a daily basis.
Correct, so I got clarification from the MIAA and from the local athletic directors. Uh, the statement that they use is prior to attending practices or games, athletes and coaches should check their temperature. If a student, athlete, or a coaching staff member has a temperature of 100.4 degrees or above, they should not attend practices or games. So I did get clarification that we're asking for families to monitor that, but if anytime an athlete does not feel well, the trainer will have a no-touch thermometer that she can detect the temperature immediately, uh, and she'll be prepared for that, and she's being trained by the high school nurse, uh, the same way that all the other nurses are being trained.
Right, so this will be a, an important part of our messaging out to families if we do move forward with sports will be, with the, this topic specifically.
It's certainly something that all of us, staff, families, everyone involved in the community, that's what we should be monitoring for, um, on a daily basis as we make the decision whether we come to work, whether we come to practice, um, if we're not feeling well, stay home, even if it's not COVID-related.
Right.
I agree with that.
And has anyone been, I have one more question. Has anyone been in contact with, um, the rec department at all to talk about what has worked and what hasn't worked? Um, because there's been a number of sports that have gone off and looks like they're continuing to offer sports, um, into the fall season. Um, in terms of, of their practices, their policies, things that in hindsight they wish they had done at the onset versus, um, kind of where they are now?
So, um, I have been in contact with Donna, and she had a, a great compliment from local, um, athletic directors that the signage for the rec department activities was outstanding. Uh, so athletic directors, um, are looking to copy that model that the rec department did, so we would definitely, um, look to get those, that same signage that the rec department had, uh, and I will definitely reach out to Donna to pick her brain on some different uh, things that she's done that have worked and some things that haven't worked.
Thank you.
One of the things from my perspective that, uh, Donna did that was really effective was she was present and she helped really, um, enforce the guidelines that we all agree is what is most protective, that she was there at all the games, she made that an appearance. Um, and I think people respected that, and they knew that that was coming, so they were more compliant. I think at the beginning, there was a little, um, more, um, flexibility with people, and then as she started showing up and really helping people understand the expectations, people started to comply a lot more. So she did a great job with that.
Her presence was appreciated as somebody who supported with coaching in the, in the summer, um, and her consistent messaging to coaches around what was expected of them and their communication with families was definitely something that helped to make what was a modified season uh, more palatable to coaches and, uh, families and athletes who are engaged in that over the summer, at least from my, my perspective. So I think it would be a good, um, collaboration or collaborative effort to kind of try to mimic some of what did work to, to bolster what might, might be a, a season like no other, um, for the high schools.
Okay, any other questions or discussion for any of our guests? So tonight, in consideration, just to kind of reiterate what we're talking about here, would be the, um, potential for level three competition with other schools for soccer, field hockey, golf, cross-country, and, um, volleyball, potentially volleyball practices outside and then competitions inside. There are many modifications to the sports. Those are MIAA modifications, specifically soccer has a lot of modifications, no direct body contact, um, no throw-ins, no head balls, so the game will look drastically different. Uh, football and cheerleading, we would have level one, which was more individual, uh, participation with a potential for a, a season, uh, in early spring, um, of, of other competitions. So that's what is on the table for tonight, and did I, did I get that right, Kevin and Frank? Okay.
Yes.
Amy, again, you're comfortable with the guidelines, how we've set things out, how it looks at least from, from this point?
Yeah, I, and I, I think right now that this is where we're at, you know, like I said, with anything, the data could change at any point. This is a novel virus. We don't have all the answers for this, but I think the MIAA, the governor, and, um, DPH have put forward guidance that are protective.
Right, uh, thank you. Uh, Frank, one other thing, so this, if we do this, it'll provide an opportunity for a lot of our students, but it won't hit all of our students. Are we, are we starting to consider how we get some socialization opportunities for other students that may not participate in athletics because, uh, we're all concerned about them as well?
So, um, you know, I will say just to, as an example to that point, we have run freshman orientation today in small groups in person, um, you, you know, where our students had an opportunity to meet with their counselors. We're running, um, you know, more groups tomorrow, uh, so between those two groups, we're having 140, uh, different freshmen, um, you know, kept connecting with the building in person, uh, with each other. So we've started that at, at a small level already. Uh, my hope is that after tonight's discussion, you know, um, allowing, um, athletic programming to take place at the high school, it opens a door to us to also um, start having some of our, our different clubs or other different activities, uh, meet in person at the school, so kids can connect with each other, they can, uh, connect with staff, uh, and, you know, explore some of the topics of interest outside of the classroom.
Great.
I think one of the keys will be that, um, we're trying to set up as many things as possible outside.
Yes.
That we've utilized, uh, the rental of some tents to help us with potentially, uh, bad weather, but, uh, usually our falls are pretty moderate. So we hope to utilize the good weather to make those things happen.
Okay, excellent discussion. Does anybody have any more questions on this? No, we're looking comfortable.
I just want to be sure that it goes through if we feel like we need to pull the plug on it. For safety reasons, you guys are going to be on that.
100%.
Okay.
Yep, good question. Okay, so we have the proposal, all three proposals we, I, I think we will, um, consider tonight, uh, as I just laid out and as Kevin and Frank have laid out. So I would entertain a motion to accept the, the three, well, the sports that we discussed for the fall, uh, as presented.
I'll move that we accept the fall sports as presented this evening with the caveat that it could change at any time, given the circumstances.
And that families may have to provide transportation?
Hmm, yeah, but I think all of those are understood because it's, it's outlined.
Okay.
And I think we'll work towards getting more details on logistics and how it actually is going to really look if we do approve this tonight.
Right.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Beth. Motion made by Bill, seconded by Beth. Any further discussion?
I just want to be clear about the girls volleyball. The practice will be outside and competitions inside.
We're going to do our best, Antonella. I'm, I, I can foresee there will be practices inside at times based on the weather or other situations, but I, I, I think we're all in agreement, so we would like to provide at least an opportunity to have some of the practices outside.
If, if the expectation from the committee is to hold those practices outside as much as possible, then we'll adhere to that. No problem.
Sounds good.
I'd also just like to say, I think what we receive from the MIAA, um, in terms of the comprehensiveness and the guidelines and, um, the level of detail, um, is striking in comparison to what we received as a school committee from the state, um, regarding academics. So I appreciate it. I think it gives local, um, decision makers a much more comprehensive package by which to base their decision on, um, in a timely fashion. Much of the guidance that came out regarding academics came out after decisions were due to the state, and that this package was way more comprehensive and way more timely and has afforded, um, local decision makers the capacity to make those decisions in a meaningful fashion.
Well said, Sarah.
Yep.
Okay, with that, a motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. So that motion carries five to zero. We will be participating in fall sports.
Awesome.
Amy, Frank, and Kevin, thank you so much for all of your time. This issue is certainly leading up to this in the many meetings that we've all attended together. Thank you for your time and efforts on this.
Thank you guys so much. Some afternoon and evenings together, Amy, Frank, and Kevin.
There you go.
Watching sports.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Okay, great conversation, uh, well-done team. I think a lot of effort went forward to that and, uh, a lot more effort we're, we're still going to have to work on to get this, this thing up and running, but moving forward.
And we'll ensure that they come back when all those other logistics are, are in place, that we can continue to keep ourselves informed about the decision we've just made, but also families?
Yep. Yeah, I think, so, um, I think it was Frank that referenced first competition wouldn't happen until October 1st, but certainly an update before that, I think is, uh, is, is pertinent. Yep.
That'll work.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all. I, I brushed past this before. Did anybody have any committee and subcommittee communications? I went past that without asking. Everything's good.
I would just say that we've been working diligently alongside the paraprofessionals union to, um, craft the three-year agreement, and we're getting very close to being able to, to move forward with that. So I think Pam and Gordon and the members of the delegation who have been meeting with us to move forward with their contract negotiations in this, in this different time.
Great. Okay, we are going to move forward now. We have some policies that we'll review. Uh, the first policy we have is policy EBCFA, and that is in regards to face coverings.
So this policy, uh, is one that the, uh, we utilize the MASCE's draft policy or, or model policy. And basically, it just outlines when and how we're using face coverings, um, within the building and outside of the building, and when there might be, um, some exemptions due to medical situations. Uh, pretty much it follows what we had also put in place in our reopening plans. When we talked about the safety and health protocols, uh, we were following basically the elements of this policy.
Okay, does it
Change, uh, one change I do want to mention, um, we were, uh, requiring all individuals to wear masks unless there's a medical exemption. I believe the MASCE's policy, um, allows for first graders, kindergartners, and preschoolers not to wear masks.
I think the little ones are going to be better at it than the adults.
That's
You tell them to put a helmet on, they put a helmet on. You tell them to put a mask on, they put the mask on. It's old people like me that don't, will wear it, but won't do it happily.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on that? It's not all entertain a motion to, um, approve the, uh, the policy as presented.
Um, I move to approve policy EBCFA, uh, face covering.
Motion's been made by Beth.
Second?
Seconded by Antonella. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you. Next up. Next up.
So next up is a policy that's pretty comprehensive, and it basically provides some flexibility and outlines the fact that, you know, we need to be talking with different groups within the ELPS community as we continue to identify, I'll give the policy name, COVID-related issues. And so it does provide a little bit of a comprehensive outline as to what school committees might be thinking about and what superintendents should be thinking about and how different things this year may be impacted, whether it be assignments or class size, calendar, and so forth, some of which we've already put in place, such as the change of the calendar once the commissioner reduced the requirement for students from 180 to 170.
Okay. Any questions on this policy?
No, I think the, I think the policy is just memorializing whatever, what we've been doing all along. So now it just becomes regular, part of the regular policy manual, given COVID-19 and everything.
Right. Yeah, so is this like a temporary policy, Gordon? Are we going to, if COVID ever goes away, or?
Basically, it's an extension and a pretty detailed extension of sort of the crisis or emergency situation policy, where it breaks down what roles people would play and how people would go about dealing with a crisis or an emergency. In this case, it becomes pretty specific towards COVID-related situations.
Right.
Do you know, I'm thinking about how, you know, a year ago, we never would have thought that this would have been a thing. So maybe, you know, having a pandemic policy or whatever you want to call it is something we can discuss after the dust, you know, with the policy committee and come up with something that'll be a little more long-lasting or.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Let's visit this in another year. I would say we revisit this specific policy and make those adaptations.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for the policy on COVID-related issues.
Move to approve EBC-SS presented.
Motion's been made by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we have a flu clinic coming up.
So this is in, actually, I shouldn't say that. Historically, we've always had a flu clinic. This year, we're looking to expand that flu clinic over to three days and offer it at two different times. This would be in conjunction with the health department, but also then with local pharmacies. I believe CVS and Walgreens would also be helping out with this and would provide a mobile flu vaccination group that would set up in probably the high school horseshoe, and then we would have a traffic pattern possibly coming in from the St. Michael's side and going up to where the flu mobile clinic would be. People would exit the car to get the vaccination and then get back in the car and exit the property.
So Gordon, this will be through the town health department. They're looking for folks to sign up ahead of time. The dates specifically are Wednesday, September 30th, Thursday, October 1st, and Friday, October 2nd. The time slots would be between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. But again, that would be by appointment, and that'll be, again, set up through the health department.
Right, they would, if you grant them the opportunity to use the property, they would set up that public way of setting up their appointments, signing up.
Right, let's go ahead.
Do you interfere with sports? Because the kids are going to be on the campus, there's going to be, kids will be probably coming in between the two and six period of time, and should we just?
We would set up the traffic pattern so we don't disrupt that, and we would, yeah, we'll communicate out. Most likely, we're going to probably need to have a detail officer to help us with this, make sure that we set that. We'll also work with DPW to set up, similar to what we did with the caps and gowns, where we had a way that they could come in and go through the parking lot without getting into different areas of the parking lot that might have parked cars.
Okay.
And Beth, and they wouldn't get out of their cars either, just so that there wouldn't be any commingling. That's the whole point of the parking lot usage. So I foresee it being, you know, half of the, the top half of the parking lot potentially as a drive right through kind of situation. Yeah. Okay. All right, any other discussion on that? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the flu vaccine clinic as proposed.
Move to approve the 2020 vaccine clinic as proposed this evening.
Okay, motion's been made by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Again, that's Wednesday, September 30th through Friday, October 2nd, and look for more details on the East Almane website for those interested in getting to that clinic.
It's going to be an important one because right now, the commissioner, Desi, is requiring flu vaccines for all students.
Yeah, will this meet the deadline for that, Gordon? When was that deadline? That?
Deadline in December, yeah.
Yeah, it's ended December.
So we, so potentially, families could sign up for this and bring the whole car full with the kids and everything.
Absolutely. Get it all at once.
Will they receive documentation if they do do that? So that can be delivered to the school to certify that they had the vaccination?
I believe so, yeah. They'll have the documentation that they can deliver to us, but I will check that.
Yeah, because I think that that might be a draw for families if they know that they're going to receive what they need in order to meet the requirements in the event that school's open in January.
I'll find that out.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, we have our final subjects this evening. We have two memorandum of understandings with both Unit A and Unit E. We did have discussion about those in executive session prior. Basically, they are related to this year's educational process, just dealing with some of the logistics of that. So with that, I will entertain a motion to accept both memorandum of understandings.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Unit A and Unit E as presented.
Motion's been made by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting. I want to thank everyone for all their hard work and effort on this, and just acknowledge that school will be starting in 13 days, two weeks from Wednesday, right? The 16th?
Yeah, 16th.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Jamie from LCAT for running the show tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Beth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion to adjourn carries five to zero. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you.